All right, it's 6:30. We'll start the meeting. I need to add an executive so we could discuss the town report dedication. Does anything, anybody have anything else?
I had a legal matter I just wanted to bring up.
Okay. Do you have a motion?
This happens before we mention that.
Okay. To adopt the agenda as amended?
Yep.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anything on the meeting minutes of November 1st? Nothing?
No.
All right, town manager's report?
Okay. Good weather and a nice turnout for our annual Veterans Day ceremony. Thanks again to Pastor Joel Tate for the invocation and benediction, the Pittsburgh Boy Scouts leading the Pledge of Allegiance, Miley Lape for her beautiful singing of the National Anthem, and Pittsburgh Veteran Eric Stage gave a wonderful speech, and the Lothrup School Chorus leading us through two songs, and also thanks to Liz and Ann for helping put this, actually putting it together.
Yeah.
Attended a remote meeting on the, on, not on 9:30. With the Agency of Commerce and Community Development to show town support for the recent Pittsburgh Village Farm Grant Application with the ACCD. This is the one they came to about a month ago, and I think, I got an email today that they, they actually received the grant, so.
Okay.
Yep. Met with the Wyman's last week to sign the contract for, contract for the transfer station. We basically took what they had in their, in their proposal, put it in the contract, so that's done. They're scheduled to take operations over as of December 1st, and they've been working with the state to take over all of our certifications and permits as the transfer station operators. Ann actually posted, Lauren sent us, Lauren, John Wyman's sister, sent us the, an hours thing that we put on our social media, so that's out.
Okay.
And the Wyman's are looking at doing some brochures for stuff, too, so.
All right.
Highway Department's been rebuilding a section of the gravel road on Oxbow Road that has been problematic with frost heaves and gets pretty wet in the spring for runoff. So they'll also be doing some shoulder ditch work to shed any water away from that rebuilt section. So it's basically from Adrian Road up to where it meets, is it Parker still, right there? Where Parker and, or is it, no, it's still Parker?
Creed Hill.
Creed Hill, right. So. Ann met with the fire department, first response, prepare their budget, and we have fire department here tonight, first response. The town attorney has sent the first round of deliberate tax letters out. Next steps will be the official tax sale process. We have 11 accounts right now that are going through that, so. I'm sure that'll dwindle down. Ann attended yesterday the Vermont Governor's Finance Officers Association Fall Seminar in Rutland, and probably at the next meeting, she'll be informed on the Select Board of some of the required changes we have to make in finance and HR on the 1st of the year. So, just some kind of housekeeping stuff. Chad and I will be recommending speed limit changes within the village district at the next Select Board meeting. We're gonna go driving around and just make sure, we noticed on our, the speed ordinance, we have some of the, some of the stuff in the ordinance does not reflect the signs that are out there, too. So we want to make sure that's fixed, so if there's tickets written that were, you know, they're written in the right zone. And just a couple things to add. I did attend the Otter Creek Communication Union District Meeting before this meeting tonight. They didn't have a, they didn't have a quorum. So, there was no business done, but I did ask about where we were at in Pittsburgh with the build-out for fiber internet, like I know Fire Hills been an issue and up that way. There's, us and Poltony unfortunately were not included in this build-out that they just received all this grant money for, so now it looks like we won't be seeing anything happen here until probably next year at this time. So that was kind of frustrating.
Really frustrating.
And one more thing to add to it today, too. Liz, Liz Overado and I met with Lyle Jobson at Cedar to see if, to get Liz to be on the Cedar Board, so we figured we'd need to have some representation there, and that went well, so.
Okay.
She's gonna start on that with some economic stuff, and yeah, I think it'll be a good relationship.
Okay, good.
Yeah, that's all I have.
Any questions from?
I have a couple of questions. So was there another person that wanted to bid on the transfer station, or where did that end up?
So I did receive a call from someone in town. I sent them the information over, but they have to be certified with the state to run a transfer station. So when we sent the RFPs out, we sent them to all the certified trash haulers that were in the area. And I did explain that, and it was in our RFP that we needed to be certified, so.
All right, you covered that with them?
Yep.
And they didn't submit anything back in?
Right.
This section on Oxbow, I went up over it. Are they think they're gonna have that in order by the time we get frozen in?
It'll be done. Do you own it today?
No.
It might be done today, because they were, they were up there today.
I was gonna say it was pretty.
Yeah. Well, we went down 18 inches in fabric and base, so.
Yeah, that was quite a job.
Yeah.
That's why I was just asking if they thought they'd have it done.
Yeah.
And that answer is yes.
Yeah.
That's all I have.
Okay. Anybody else? Did you, you had some?
I did. As far as the internet goes, I believe it was last year we had somebody from, not Xfinity, the other company that services here.
Wasn't it Phidium? No?
No. Consolidated.
Oh.
Yeah, I don't remember. But anyways, I had them out at the, at our house, and, because we were having problems with our internet, and the guy told me, "They have the equipment. They just need the go-ahead to put it in." He said, "If we got the go-ahead to put it in, we can put the equipment in. You'd have 60 megabytes or whatever."
So with Phidium, I know their big thing has been pushing fiber out, and they do have build-outs in Pittsburgh now, but I don't know how far they're going. But you can go to their website, and actually type in your address, and they'll tell you if they have fiber there yet. So Phidium is consolidated, same company.
Okay.
Yeah. So, but you could look that way and see if you're, if you're there, but yeah. It's, it's kind of a slow process. So I was a little frustrated to find out that they're still a year out, you know.
Probably by then, the equipment that they have will be obsolete. They'll have to get new equipment.
Or it'll be, the company will be sold three times. That should never happen, so, you know.
How did Pittsburgh and Poltony be the two that were?
I know.
That's something against towns with a letter P. That's what I was thinking, too. I don't know. So. I mean, a lot of it's kind of on Route 7 corridor, sort of going out from that way, so I'm sure the thing that was farther away were, you know, the least served on this.
Comes right up almost, almost to my place right now.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, Xfinity stops at our neighbors. $2,000 if they want to extend it a little bit that they have to go to get to our place.
Yeah.
Like, yeah, no.
So I'll keep pushing them.
All right.
See what we can do.
Okay, thanks. Any Select Board member remarks? Any public comment?
I do have one other thing. Go ahead.
I can wait till.
I was just gonna say, I did think the Veterans Day was very well done.
Yeah, I know, it was great.
It was a good thing.
Yeah. It was. Any public comment?
Actually, I had a question, and actually being that you're here, Chief, maybe you know. The, last week, there was a fairly large police presence over at the parking lot across from San Alfonso. If anything in particular was going on, I didn't see any of your people there, but I know y'all are part-time, so.
I wasn't here. I just got back.
I can relate to that. I was in class for that. It was radar class. We have to be certified in radar, so. That's why the, that's why we set, they set up down at the church parking lot, so we can do it both ways. We have to stationary and moving targets.
Did you have something you had to?
I, I did. I've been talking with this woman, Jenny Parker, lives in town on, she came to present to me about doing this ability for us to send texts out in like a mass thing. So if, like, when we had flooding, we could, we could send out texts to folks, residents, locals, if they, they have to sign up for it. It's $75 a month for us to send, like blast out to 1,000 people at, you know, or 1,000 texts we get, so if we had 500 people sign up, whatever, we'd get to do it twice. I haven't committed to it, but I'm looking at, like, I could see where this could be beneficial for even like, say, the fire department if there's a bad accident somewhere, or we have a health issue, like when we had a, we had to do a boil water on the section of town right before Labor Day weekend. This could be a really good way to get folks, you know, notice of what's going on. Because usually if something comes up like that on your phone, it's, you know, you see it versus email, or, you know, if we post on the website, you only, you only know it if you go look on the website. It, the first two months are free. It is monthly, so I, I'd really, I'd kind of like us to try this and see how this works, and if we can use it for various things, like we could send out, I notice like, you know, today was the tax deadline. We could have blasted something out Monday for that, just as folks sign up on it. We can put something in the newsletter for, you know, this, we're gonna be trying this as a trial thing, but.
That's 800 bucks a year?
Yeah.
Looking at the past, has there been a significant amount of events that that really would have been important to have had?
I think so. I think we're looking at everything that we can do. I mean, you, we've all heard it. What's the one thing people say, "Well, we didn't know about this." You know, we didn't, you know, we could, we could blast, we could have done it with the transfer station.
It's a monthly with no contract?
Yeah, it's $75 a month.
Especially in your place of culverts or doing.
Yeah, road closures, yeah.
I know.
Even if, you know, if, say, something gets canceled with rec, Liz could blast it out to, you know. So, I think it's worth trying, and if we don't like it, if we don't think it works, but.
And it'd be a voluntary list?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we can't.
I'm finally trying it for a few months.
Yeah, I think it's anything that's another way to get information out.
Try it three months and see if it's really working.
I don't really need a motion for it, you know, because it's definitely well within my limit. But I wanted to talk to you guys about it, see what your thoughts were first.
Try it for a little while.
I think it's worth trying.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thanks. That's, that's it for me, I promise.
All right. All right, we have no old business, so go into new business. We had a BURDIT fund request from the Otter Valley Football Club. So, and I think we've all looked at that, and Tom, does someone from, the way I've always understood the way the BURDIT fund works, does someone from the school board actually have to come in person to request it?
The, the request needs to come from the Otter Valley Board.
Which unfortunately, I guess they weren't told that.
We, we would get the request from Otter Valley. If it passed there, that would come to us for, or for our approval, this board. So, and they, actually, they should be the ones presenting it. Yeah, that's what they.
You need the Pitts, the people, the, the whole school board, or do you need?
This, this goes to the, that, I think that.
Well, the Pitts, do we even have any Pittsburgh reps right now?
One just got done. I can't.
Yeah, we may have one, I don't know. I think there's only. I don't remember, we went to arbitration on this a few years ago when they brought this whole board in. This board has to vote unanimous.
Right.
To have anything pass. The Otter Valley, or the union board now, what it is, I can't re, it's not their whole board, but it's a.
I think it's like two-thirds, but unanimous of any Pittsburgh reps that are on.
Exactly.
Yep.
It doesn't need to be their whole entire board, but I think it's either seven or eight members.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know the exact number now.
And then the board has to present?
The board has to present to this board, and.
But no, I think what they're asking, it's not like the whole board would have to come.
No, no.
They would just, you just, a couple of representatives, you know.
A board representative from that board would have to.
So they need to do the application, not us.
Exactly.
Correct.
Yeah.
I know, and I'm sorry you didn't know that beforehand.
No, they didn't. When I came here to the town office to inquire, it was not told that.
Oh, okay.
They may not.
Yeah, I apologize.
I was, I was told, here's the application. It gets filled out and returned to the Board of Trustees, and then you get put on the agenda.
Mm-hmm.
It's not the trustees, though. It's not the Board of Trustees.
No.
It's the Select Board.
So no, I think that's probably just old information that was had, right?
It still has to come to the Board of Trustees eventually.
Right.
We, the Board of Trustees don't vote on it. I'm on the Board of Trustees.
Right.
And, no, we don't vote on it. It's just this board and that board. And we do what.
Yeah, I don't, I don't remember the name of the lady. She was working in the town clerk's office. She said she was on the Board of Trustees.
Right.
All right, we'll go back to the drawing board.
So, just because you're here.
Yeah.
And so I did read, I did read through the application. So when was the, when are you hoping to get this done by?
Uh, which, which, our goal is for next fall.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Work actually is this summer, summer coming.
Okay.
About '24.
All right.
And I, I read the, I read, also read it. Are you requesting just 20,000 total, or are you requesting more than that? I saw the, and there was something like 200,000.
It was like broken down, right?
We're trying to raise 250.
Yep.
We're breaking it up into fiscal years.
Okay.
Well, I guess that's my question. Are you asking money for additional years, or for just two years? The way I read it, two years.
Just for the two.
It's 20,000 total, but 10 for each fiscal.
Okay.
You know, each, I mean, everything's different depending on how your, your finances are.
Have you, have you secured the rest of the money, or is it still a big gap?
So what is, what has happened is, we did our homework to plan the project, and then we had to present to the school board to get permission to have a capital fundraising campaign. So we went to that school board meeting. We were, we were prepared for that about a year ago, but that group of administration retired. Both principals, Jeannie Collins, everybody, so we kind of had to start over. So we got to where we were ready again with current pricing and, and all of that homework, and then presented to the school board, got unanimous, yes, you know, you can start your capital campaign.
So if, just for, for talk, if, if we approved this, you'd have the rest in your hand, or you would be able to cover all the rest of it that you need?
Not yet. We're just starting that.
Okay.
We're just starting that process. Actually, some of our, some of our literature is just starting to hit newspapers this week.
Oh, okay.
We've hit the point where they could say, they said, "Yes, you can start fundraising," so. And the first piece of it, you know, we've got a lot of commitments from in-kind donations, you know, people that, you know, would do the electrical work, people that do, you know, whatever excavation, stuff like that. The first part of it that's gonna be required is to raise enough money to actually order the lights, because there's a waiting period for the lights themselves. You know, it could be six months or so.
It would seem to me like you would want to have all your ducks in a row for, from the financial side of it before.
We have a lot of verbal commitments from people. You know, first check is coming in this week for 20.
20,000.
20,000.
Yeah.
You know, from one individual.
Yeah.
And another one that's, you know, a verbal commitment for 25. You know, I'm not a rich guy, but I wrote the first check for a thousand bucks out of my checking account.
Nice.
I believe in it. You know, it's not just, you know, I mean, my kids are, are long gone from the school, but it's, you know, generations.
Hmm.
I think it's gonna be a great thing down the road.
Great. Well, thank you.
Yes.
And then, so I guess, yeah, if you can, if you can get, we can get you right on the next agenda if you can get somebody from the school board that's willing to come.
We'll make that call tomorrow and find out who can, who should do that.
Okay, yeah, all right.
And do you want us to attend alone with them, or just they, just the school board needs to come?
I mean.
It's up to you.
If you'd like to, you know?
Sure.
Yeah.
It'd probably be good just to answer any questions that came up.
Sure, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
And it doesn't hurt.
No.
I like this.
Yeah.
It's just more comfortable then.
Right. Definitely. Yeah, yeah, so we'll just, we'll table it till the next, next meeting. All right, great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, fire department budget and first response budget.
So, I'm gonna give this to Ann, actually, because she worked with, with Bill and, and first response Bob with, with these more than, than I did, so. And I'm, and Bill's here, too, to, to talk, so. I'll let them talk.
Do you want me just go with it, with your budget?
Yeah, and then if they got any, you know.
Okay, I don't see any questions.
I mean, we did, we spent probably hour and a half with Ann, me and Tom, so.
Okay.
Um, actually, it was, I liked it that way better than the previous years, so. Got a little insight on what was gonna be going on, you know, as far as insurances.
Right.
And so that was, yeah.
So on your budgets, it's page 15. Fire has no revenue unless they get donations, and I don't budget for donations. We increased their labor line due to, because they all get a stipend based on the number of hours they are on a call. It's not for their training hours, it's not for that kind of thing. It's only when they're on a call. But minimum wage is going up, therefore, we increased fire stipend amount.
Okay.
And then, in line with that, to FICA Medicare, we went up a little bit, trying to keep up with the times. Insurances, right now, we're still guesstimating. We haven't received passive renewal amounts yet. Building fuel, I raised it $1,000. We, we never know. We don't have the crystal ball of what heating fuel's gonna do. I'd rather be safe than sorry. Last year, we went over budget about $550, so that would have been 70. $500 spent instead of 7,000, so I moved it to 8,000. A lot of the stuff, we kept the same. Same with other departments we've met. Telephone and communications, I joined together. Communicating is communicating, whether it's by phone or by radio. We kept dispatching services the same because we're not sure what the state's gonna do with that still to this point.
State's not sure, neither.
Yeah.
So, we figured we better play that one safe rather than sorry. Building maintenance, they said they thought 5,000 would still be sufficient. We did Roy A.'s truck maintenance to 20,000 instead of 15,000 just due to the sheer cost of parts and everything. I mean, if you're looking at tires, if you're looking at anything, it costs a lot of money right out of the gate. The hose and ladder testing, I believe that now has to be done annually. We had pulled it out starting this fiscal year to kind of track the costs of it, so I use that number again. Equipment maintenance, we kept the same. Uh, the ladder truck certificate is due this year, hence the $1,500 for that. New equipment, we kept the same. The only other change was vehicle replacement fund. We went up about $11,000. We know vehicles are getting no cheaper, fire trucks included. We know it's gonna be, Bill, did you tell me eight years? Before we have to start shopping for a new one?
Yeah, well, probably six years before we start shopping.
Six years shopping, eight years it actually should be.
Our pumper, our engine 24 is 12 years old, so.
Yeah. So I said, right now, we don't, the way we're growing that account, it's not gonna be sufficient to put a substantial down payment down if anything was to happen catastrophically to a vehicle in an accident or anything. It would severely drain that account, too. So, we wanted to raise it to 70,000 this year to give a little bit of the buffer. But if anybody has any questions on the line, that's the hot spots on that one.
So just a question on the new equipment fund. So the actual for 23 was 6250?
Yep.
And the budget for 24 is 15?
Right, because last year, they used some of the funds, looking to see what it was.
From somewhere else?
Somewhere else. Because we used it for protective equipment instead last year.
You combined those?
So protective equipment went over budget last year. New equipment was under budget. We're hoping this year, they'll both be within budget.
Are those combined, or that's no?
No, they're separate. So on page 15, you'll see protective equipment, four lines up from the bottom. It was budgeted at 20,000. They used 42,767 last year.
Ah, okay.
So.
Nope, that's, the answer's that.
They had received a donation, plus they used part of their new equipment fund and a couple of other ones that they had underspent on to keep within budget or very close to it.
I think a set of fire gear now is up to like $6,000. That's just for the, that's just for the.
Just for turnout gear?
Wow.
And we have, we, we have one set ordered, but we are, are checking out some gear that doesn't have the necessary fire protection if you're not going inside, so. It's a little bit cheaper, it's about half price, so. Somebody that's running a truck that never goes inside.
Right, right.
Probably can save a little bit there, is what we're, is what we're trying to do, so. But yeah, it's, then an air pack, you're looking at probably $11,000 in the tank and a mask and everything, so.
Yeah.
Put fire on it and then jack the price up. Anyway.
Is it possible that you can tell me what percentage you may have raised your annual budget this year over what it was last year? I realize there are increases that you have no control over.
11.99.
Almost 12, Joe.
It's 12% increase.
I think last year it was three and a half or something.
Yeah, last year was not a substantial. It's the vehicle replacement fund, and then the vehicle repairs fund are the two driving that bus. And then, like I said, we did raise the stipend amount just because we know minimum wage has gone up. But Bill did inform me, there was approximately 110 calls.
Yeah.
For this last fiscal year.
And you can't really base it on the calls. You gotta base it on the hours of the call.
Right, no, but in general, there were 110.
I mean, we did mutualize to Procter for, I think, six structured fires. So that's, you know, that's a good share of time there. You're looking at probably averaging three hours anyways, so. But, and most of our calls, probably, I'd say, 80% of them are 1050s accidents, which I wanna get with Dave and Ann on that. I think it might be time to start maybe charging the out-of-town people that get in accidents. I know some departments do it. I, I don't, I'd wanna charge this. I don't wanna charge the insurance company or the citizens of Pittsburgh. I think if you get somebody from out of state or out of town, you know.
We've been talking about it with PD, too.
Yeah.
You know, we can go after insurance.
Yeah.
Guardrails and all that other stuff, too.
Yeah.
I, I think, I think so. I mean, 15 years ago, we were paying for trucks that flipped over, and we paid the fire department by the hour, and that was in Vermont, so.
Well, yeah, you get a, like a tractor trailer accident or something, you're there for probably six, seven, eight hours, you know.
Maybe both. Back in the past, we always charged for tractor trailer, something like that. We always billed insurance. We both, back in the past, we always charged the tractor trailer or something like that, we always billed the insurance company.
Yeah, I think we did the last one we had there when John was here, but.
That's always been a practice.
Even the, even the other.
My thing is the array of recruits.
You're tied up for a couple hours.
Yeah.
Out of town, yeah. That's a good idea. I don't have any other questions.
Okay, anybody else have any other questions about fire department's budget? All right, first response?
Okay, first response. You are gonna see a massive increase in first response.
Page thirteen.
Page thirteen, sorry, page thirteen, yes. And before I start with first response, I wanna let you know a few things from my conversation. I sat with Bob Foley and Tony Lockwood, both extensively about their budget. They did last year about two hundred calls. He didn't have the exact figure, but he said it was around two hundred, and that's just what they could do in the evenings and nighttime. Daytime, they don't really have the workforce.
Yeah.
They have nine, I believe, first responders right now, and a lot of them are also firemen, so it's hard for them to say whether there's gonna be a fireman on a call, or if they're gonna be first response on a call. But first response did ask me if they could start doing a stipend program like the fire department does. They said they didn't know how it worked. I had found out how it worked, 'cause I was nosy and asked before first response, I met with first response after.
Yeah.
Or, no, I met with first response first, and then I asked Bill after, how do you do this? 'Cause I don't know how you do this. But first response said it would be kinda nice to be able to offer a stipend like the fire department does. That's not included in this budget right now, because I didn't know how the board would feel about that, and I don't even know roughly how many hours that would look like. It would be less than, fire, obviously, because there's fewer people on a call, and there's fewer people in general, but there are more calls. So, it's gonna have to be finding out from them approximately how many hours we're looking at, to even try to budget that. And then they did let me know, their suburban is no longer able to be inspected, it cannot be inspected again. They are looking to try to find or get two pieces of equipment. They would like a Lucas machine, which, please correct me if I'm wrong, is a CPR machine that helps administer CPR. And the other one is a life pack that does a variety of things. Is it EKG?
Yeah, it's a cardiac monitor, it's EKG, blood pressures.
Pulse ox.
Okay.
It does a variety of things. If we were to buy both of them brand-new, they're between fifty-four and fifty-six thousand dollars a piece. They said they can find refurbished ones for between fifteen and sixteen thousand dollars a piece roughly. So, when you're looking at this budget, I did include one of those two pieces of equipment in this budget.
Okay.
And I also did increase the amount that we're putting through for a new equipment fund. They do have about fifty-something thousand, fifty-six-ish thousand in the fund currently. They do need a suburban. I don't know what the status is of the ambulance at all, but I know they rely on the suburban more than anything. So, that is something that is going to need to be replaced sooner rather than later. But then going through their budget, line by line. Vehicle maintenance, they asked it to go to two thousand instead of fifteen hundred, just due again to the sheer cost of things. New equipment hadn't been budgeted for quite a while. I put in there sixteen thousand for one of those two machines. Utilities, we kept the same. Training fees, they asked for five hundred dollars for training fees, so that they could bring somebody in, hopefully to train who they have. Vehicle replacement, we went from seven thousand to ten thousand. And then building improvements, they asked to keep at five thousand. They'd really like the interior of their building painted. Apparently, it hasn't been done since probably I was in high school.
Well, I didn't mean that.
It's okay, I know my age.
We'll say five years ago?
Yeah, I should've said that.
Plus another, you know, fifteen, so. Plus, a little bit more than that. Anyways, that's their budget. They do, they have been running very small. Their budget for this fiscal year, we're in now, is twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and fifty-eight. Their proposed budget for fiscal year twenty-twenty-five is forty-eight thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars. So, that's a sixty-seven point seven seven percent increase. It's a valuable asset to the town.
It is, I know.
I think it's just one of those things that we really need to look at the funding and start funding.
Right, the percentage looks high because the numbers are so low.
Well, that's, I know it's been underfunded.
It's really a twenty thousand dollar increase, so.
Are they gonna put a proposal together for what they think a stipend should be for?
I can reach out to Bob and Tony to find out what the numbers would look like. They do keep track of it, they just have never paid it.
I think they probably should put something together, so.
I can easily ask them to put something together.
So, there was some concern, Ann and I were talking about this, with having a first response vehicle that's not inspectable. That raises all kinds of concerns, I think.
Absolutely, there's.
Yeah, and apparently, there was some discussion, and you guys can correct me on this, that there was discussion a while back about replacing a vehicle, but to go for a used vehicle?
I think that's what we discussed.
I, I, I don't, I would, I would like to see them get a new vehicle, because if they're gonna get ten or twelve years out of it, buying a used one seems like we're just gonna be buying someone else's problem, especially for a first response vehicle. I don't know, it just seems like, and the way used vehicles are going, they're not that much less than new ones now. I mean, really, if you look at what they are with the miles that are on them. But I, I'm wondering if you'd be okay with us trying to get some pricing on new vehicles versus something that's.
Do you really think something's got four-wheel drive?
I think that's why.
Two hundred, two hundred calls they responded to, that's a lot. And I know they had received more calls than that too, but these were the ones that they were able to.
I think we should look at both options, and then take a look.
Hey, is there any grant money available for anything like that, or have to long shot?
I don't know. I know that Senator Sanders' office puts a lot, does a lot of like, they have firefighter grants and stuff that come out quite often. I'd have to look for first responders.
I haven't seen any recently.
Yeah.
I've been looking.
We can, we can definitely do some research to see what's out there. We do have about fifty-three thousand dollars in the vehicle replacement fund for them right now, so that's not a bad, that's not a bad start.
Oh.
The actual increase, the percentage of the increase in last year's budget to this year's would be what?
Sixty-seven percent.
Sixty-seven percent.
Yeah, twenty thousand dollars.
I think you might wanna act on a non-inspect, non-inspectable or inspectable vehicle fairly quick.
Yeah.
I agree.
I don't think we need that kind of liability.
Unfortunately, it's not transporting people, 'cause that would, we should just.
I know, but I think we should, that probably bears some, we don't need that exposure.
What it's doing, it needs to be safe, so.
Does the tag run out on it?
Is it out? Community plate, so.
Do you know?
I don't know.
They're municipal, it could be five years. Is it a couple of years?
No, it's inspected yearly, yeah.
It's inspected yearly, but our plates don't go up for.
Could you find out how much longer on that inspection sticker? You know, 'cause we can't do it again, we can't do it again, we gotta deal with it.
I'll find out from Bob.
Well, it's a regular inspection, but it has to be done just like the original vehicle.
Let's just find out how much our window is here.
It's not a special heavy-duty. More extensive than regular vehicles.
I don't have any other questions on this.
All right, I know, anybody else have any questions?
Does anybody know, maybe somebody from here would know, is EMS an essential service in Vermont like fire and PD is? Because if EMS is an essential service, there's all kinds of grants out there. But the big thing is, is it has to be an essential service by the state.
Okay.
Just like fire and PD is. So, if anybody knows if it's an essential service here, then there should be money out there to assist them.
Right, okay.
I don't know, but it could be different if it's first response versus.
It's still EMS.
Like regional.
Right, okay.
It's still emergency medicine, but they're not, they're not transporting, is what I'm saying, so it may be different.
Okay.
I don't know that.
Yeah, no, yep.
So, on the EMS side of things, I do know EMS is not an essential service. Fire department, police department are essential services. EMS is not an essential service. That's why you get a lot of people trying to bid for places, a lot of the ambulance services bidding for contracts and stuff, because they're looking for the money. EMS is not an essential service like fire department is.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Would that question, whether it's qualified or not, be a question that Book Shaw might be able to answer, or?
Yeah, well, we'll make some calls. I'm wondering too, if, you know, like, I remember growing up in Bristol, and I'm sure all the towns do it, that have ambulance services, you could have, you could have an annual membership? You know, that lots of folks were doing? So, you know, we could, we could look at that for first response too, maybe that'd be a way to, you know, just a thought. And then, you know, even back to the insurance thing, like, you know, ambulance is Bill's insurance company, so I don't know if we could do that as well.
Yeah, okay.
A lot of calls.
You can bill on transporting, and you can bill for equipment used during transport. I don't know if you can bill for equipment used on scene.
And we'll look into it, see what we can do.
It's not that bad, it's not that bad an idea.
Yeah.
If somebody wanted to do it to raise some extra money for their equipment, yeah.
I think Rutland Regional offers a yearly subscription, 'cause I'm pretty sure that Ken is lined up with that for our business, which is a good thing. But of course, Pittsford doesn't transport, so.
They're losing out on money.
Kind of a different category.
You can't bill for it.
Well, we'd have to, we'd have to buy an ambulance. Those aren't cheap.
Actually, personally, I think get rid of the suburban and just stick with an ambulance for the rehab purposes. You don't really need two vehicles for what you're doing here. I would say a four, a brand-new four-wheel-drive ambulance would be more than enough than what you need. Personally, I would change the whole operation and make each member vehicle a first response vehicle. You'll cut down on your response times, and you might even get more members. That's the way Chatsala does it, and they have the best response time in the industry, anywhere.
And that's gonna increase your vehicle insurance, because it's a liability.
Does it if you're a firefighter?
Yes.
My insurance never went up when I was a firefighter. Even when I had blue lights, I, my insurance never went up.
They can raise your insurance, or they can cancel your insurance.
Really? They never did it with me when I was there.
Just so you're aware, a new ambulance, right now, you're looking at about three hundred thousand dollars.
But if they're talking about getting a new one, might as well get a new four-wheel drive.
I don't know why we would need ambulance to begin with, 'cause we don't transport.
We're just first response, so no transport.
That might be a bigger discussion.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good points.
Need a bigger garage, though.
Yeah, all right.
All right, so we're good on that?
Yep.
Okay.
Questions on budget stuff?
Thank you.
No questions on budget stuff? So, so Ann and I, we're talking today, and we're hoping that, like, after tonight, that we can really, I mean, we're gonna guestimate appropriations, just to see where we're at, you know, 'cause then we'll know that number too. But what we can get for an overall, I mean, right now, we're, we're looking pretty, pretty lean, which is good, but we wanna try to have a total, you know, budget number for you here.
Right, right.
So, and appropriations technically aren't in our budget anyway.
Yep, have a good night.
Take care.
Take care, Bill. But hopefully, next meeting, we have it tightened up a little bit more and.
Okay. Okay. All right, municipal reappraisal, Act sixty-eight.
So, Lisa's here tonight for this.
Hey. I'm wondering whether budget time is a really bad time to bring it up? Maybe it's the right time to bring it up. I think your board members have this in your packet, but I have other copies if anybody else needs one, or anybody in the group wants to take a look at it, you can pass that around. So, this is, this H four eighty, now known as Act sixty-eight of twenty-twenty-three, is of, is of serious concern to the Vermont Assessors and Listers Association. And we, at this point, feel like we need the voice of BLCT and our local select boards and town managers to hopefully share the same concerns and weigh in on how this is actually implemented. So, the bill is passed, where PBR has been charged with developing a detailed implementation proposal for creating a statewide system to conduct reappraisals of municipal and statewide education grand lists. Now, if you don't look at that too closely, it might say, phew, that's right off our plates as towns. We won't have to plan for this, we won't have to budget for this. Really, has the state ever funded one of these things, anything like this, a hundred percent? There will be costs that will, will kick back to the towns. But what's more concerning is language within the House-passed version states, upon completion of a reappraisal pursuant to this subsection, the property values set by the commissioner shall be binding on the municipality and the municipality's municipal and statewide education grand list.
Whoa.
This is just nothing but a massive power grab.
Yeah, not a chance.
And an assault on local control. But what can we do? The bill has been passed, the, how it's going to be implemented is, is rather vague, but yet, you know, we, we passed a bill to make this happen, and now we're starting the study for how they're gonna make it happen. So, it's, it's really alarming, and, you know, your Rutland County senators and representatives were pretty much uniformly opposed to this, and spoke very intelligently and vehemently against it. And they were just like the lone voices in the crowd, had this conversation with Butch, and, you know, he's like, it's Chittenden County. And I'm like, no, sadly, it wasn't just Chittenden County, it was Addison County. It was this Emily Cornheiser, the chair of House Ways and Means, is from Brattleboro, well, by way of California or something, but. It's, it's, it's a proposal that's out of sync with Vermont, not to, you know, cast stones at out-of-staters. But this plan has been in the works for a while, I fear, and they're gonna try to make it happen.
I don't think you have to cast stones at out-of-staters. This, this is our legislature.
It is.
Out of control, yeah.
It's, it's solutions that they can't even point to a state that's successfully done that. In fact, one of our VALA members, the assessor in Hartford, is a longtime assessor in New Hampshire, and he testified that New Hampshire basically tried this, and it didn't work. So, they haven't pointed to a single example where this is working in some other state. The only way it could conceivably work if we went to countywide, a countywide form of government, or at least in a set, which we do not have. So, there's, there's just so many ways, it's just, it's not a good fit for Vermont. You know, we're trying as VALA, and I know BLCT is trying to say, let's, let's have a meeting of the minds on some points here. So, one of the things that brought this about is a lot of towns, like, waiting way too long to do a reappraisal. But ironically, who were those towns that waited so long? With a few exceptions, it wasn't little municipalities like West Rutland and Pittsburgh, or any of my towns. They've all done a reappraisal within the last ten years. The big culprits that brought attention to this, Burlington. City of Rutland hasn't caught as much flak for it, but they haven't done a reappraisal in like fifteen or sixteen years either. So, what happened is they waited for sixteen years in Burlington. Meanwhile, they've got economies of scale where they can probably do a reappraisal for a much cheaper per parcel price than we ever could have, but their Board of Alderman didn't wanna do it, didn't wanna do it. And then when they did it sixteen years later, particularly in the real estate market that we found ourselves in, sticker shock.
I'm sure.
And, you know, appeals all over the place, but, you know, that's, just goes with the territory when you put it off too long. So, that's very frustrating for those of us who, you know, have been working with our select boards in our small towns, and we've been doing the right thing, and maintaining our grand lists, and doing reappraisals. On average, I would say every ten years for most of our small towns. So, what you can do about it, you know, there's, I have this vague hope that the economic feasibility, if they are really forced to examine this, they will realize that their plan for funding this, to do town-wide reappraisals every six years, for the per parcel price, that, by their math, the per parcel price that they were paying towns, which is eight fifty a parcel per, per year, that's not gonna add up to the hundred and twenty a parcel that it's gonna cost to do most town-wide reappraisals. So, that's my, you know, hope in the back of my mind, that they will realize very quickly that this just was not feasible. But, you know, the fear is, that isn't what'll happen. So, if they take over our municipal grand list, where will I be as an assessor or as a lister? I've gotta sign a grand list, I didn't have any say in approving it? I've gotta present that to you, and then I've gotta defend it at appeals to taxpayers? It's a problem.
What's your suggestion on what we should do? A letter to Butch?
I think a letter from the board to, to the, to BLCT, to PBR, because PBR is, PBR is charged with this study. PBR is stating to all of us that have interacted with them, that we are going to be stakeholders, that municipal officials, that this is, and, and listers and assessors.
What's that acronym for?
What's that?
PE what?
PBR is Property Valuation and Review. That's the part of the tax department that basically supervises reappraisals. And they're charged with, they put out an RFP for this fifty thousand dollar study, to implement this statewide reappraisal system. And it's, it's really critical that they have stakeholder involvement, but I'm really worried what that means to anybody in Montpelier. I think it means checking boxes. Yeah, we talked to VALA, yeah, we talked to a few select boards, and we're gonna do what we wanted to do anyway.
How can they even come up with a honest valuation of a property, say, in Pittsburgh versus Essex?
They cannot, and that's the problem.
That's the concern, that I, I think.
It's kinda like trying to make all the school budgets the same. You can't do that, and the state has not figured out that that is not possible yet.
Was that what drove this, was, do you think education taxes in particular drove this?
I don't, how is this gonna save on education taxes? I don't know.
No, I'm thinking it's trying to get more. I'm thinking the state's just trying to get more.
My fear is that in the back room, there's special interests, and that there will be winners and losers with this deal, and some people will get a better tax assessment, a more favorable tax assessment than others will. That's, that's my fear, and my cynicism, which I think time has proved that sometimes I'm not as cynical as I think, I'm not nearly cynical enough, so that, that may be the case. It's also about them wanting to control data. There's a lot of that going on in Montpelier. I had a request that I found particularly offensive from Property Valuation Review from the Homestead Department here in Pittsburgh. They said they were randomly auditing a certain number of towns in Vermont, and asked me to name up to twenty-five people in town who should be filing the homestead and are not.
What?
And I said, okay, A, I don't have that information, B, it's none of your business, and it's none of my business, and C, if I thought I had that information, I might be wrong. So, there's a lot of big brothering and data gathering that. So there's a lot of big brothering and, and data gathering that is going to be based on erroneous data, so take the homestead. If I were to, to say that, I might be talking about people who have moved to Florida, and I, I know several families who moved to Florida, lived in Florida, six months and one day or whatever the rule is, and still live in, still have a home in Vermont. So they file legally in whatever homestead state, um, you know, they choose. Um, and some that I know of have also, the two families I'm thinking of changed their mind because they decided Florida wasn't all it was cracked up to be and moved back to Vermont, so how would I know? It's none of my business to know that. Um, you know, that's between them and the tax department and the IRS, and I, I don't think we should be being homestead police. My job is a fair market value for everybody's property, and how you use it is none of my business.
Correct. What's really sad about that is just a few minutes ago, we're sitting there talking about a twenty thousand dollar increase in our local first response. Like it's a big deal, which it is a big deal to us, but yet, this stuff happens and millions of dollars go to other places where we're, we're the first people they scream at, or you guys now, because I'm not a select board member anymore, but, you know, that's where the, the issues come. It doesn't, doesn't, people don't go, they don't know how to go to the other, and that's just the way it is.
She brings up a very good point, and most likely there's special interests in the background trying to divert money somewhere else, and we cannot allow the state to just keep taking things away from the town. Thank you for bringing this to our attention.
Yeah, let, let me know if I can do anything else. I, I think a letter, um, on our Valla website, we have a letter that the town of Colchester Select Board submitted during, during the legislative session about this. You know, there are plenty of other, um, municipal boards that feel the same way.
Lisa and I could work on something.
I would like to make a motion that we do have a letter written up by Dave and Lisa against this and get it sent to the proper places.
Hopefully have it to the next board meeting for some answers.
Yeah, and I would suggest, I would suggest do it on your own and, um, also put the pressure on BLCT. I mean, they're supposed to be representing our municipalities, and I did, um, attend a board meeting via Zoom last week, and they had a letter composed, which is along the lines of this letter from, from Valla, and then they kind of drew back after discussing it among their committee, and I'm not sure, I can try to get that from Ted Brady, but I think, I think Ted needs to hear from as many towns as possible that, no, we want you to pursue this, this is.
Yeah, I'm surprised they didn't. I mean, that's their, kind of their whole reason for being is to make sure there isn't so much consolidated part at the state level.
They have been a little conflict because Karen Horn just retired, and she was like the person that was really pushing this with the league, so, um, I know they just hired Josh Hanford from ACCD, so we'll see what happens there.
So that, that was how it started. Karen Horn came to me at a Valla conference and said, we have a CLA crisis, and I'm like, okay, what do I do with this information? No, we do not have a CLA crisis, Karen, we have a real estate market of historic proportions. It's not a crisis in the CLA, the CLA is doing what it's supposed to do.
It's all this.
And so they, so BLCT actually did kind of run to the legislature with this, and then Cornheiser's committee kind of went wild with it.
Karen was really, really supportive of self-governance with towns versus, you know, so, you know, that's, that's unfortunate she's done, but she retired, so.
Yeah, I think she was, she was essentially used as a pawn that this CLA cra, you know, when you, when you want to make something happen and pull the wool over people's eyes, sometimes you manufacture a crisis or make it into a bigger deal than it is. I tried to present to them at the BLCT meeting last week, I was like, you know, I've been doing this for twenty years and there've always been highs and lows with the real estate market, so perhaps we take a step back and think about this too, she'll pass.
Yeah. All right. Thank you. Thank you for that letter out, Ann.
Seems like a lot of towns would be pushing to get something changed on that.
Yeah, we'll see, hopefully. All right, reappointment for Rutland Emergency Management Committee?
So in your packet, there's a letter and actually the delegation form to reappoint. Tim Cornell is our EMD and Steve Shirtsleeve as the EMR, I guess they call him now, Emergency Management Rep, so.
Both were accepted?
Yep.
Okay, great.
I'm going to give this one to you folks to sign, so I'm just going to attach it to the packet.
Okay, sounds good.
Yep.
Okay. Need to vote on that?
Why not, sure.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Actually, only Alicia needs to sign it, so I might as well just, oh, do you need a pen too? I see you have a pencil, okay.
I do have a special pen, my special gel pen. All right, Rec Area Improvements to the Swimming Area.
Okay. You want to talk about this one too, Ann?
I can talk if you want me to.
I would love to have you talk, because then I don't have to bring her to more meetings.
So, um, when we bought the dock last spring, and they pulled the old dock off, they realized that the wooden support structure that was there for, I don't even know how many years to support the dock was starting to disintegrate, and the boards were starting to pull away from the land. So they, they were trying to figure out what to do. Uh, Rick got involved and said, I'd be willing to donate my labor and equipment to dig out what's there, put in concrete so that it won't move to form to the new dock to support it. Um, Rick and Liz have worked together to talk to Carreras, Carreras has said they would, because it's so many yards of concrete, they can't feasibly donate that many yards of concrete, but they're willing to give a reduced rate for the concrete. Rick was asking the rec to pay for the boxes of ties he needs for his forms and for the rebar, so the, and then Florence Crestone has said they will donate all of the stone that we need to backfill the new wall. Um, and the new wall will have some setbacks in it to help support the wall. It's considered probably a fix that'll last longer than anybody in this room, um, because it is concrete and it'll be strong and sturdy. But it is going to cost the rec about six thousand, sixty-five hundred dollars roughly for the material that's needed, so therefore we felt it should come to the board for approval. There is plenty of money in the rec capital fund to help cover it, there's.
Almost nineteen thousand dollars.
Yeah, there's, there's more than that, once we get done with this year's appropriation, that goes into that account.
Okay.
Um, to cover it, so it's just a matter of, yea, we're willing to pay for these materials or we need to look for another solution.
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Thanks, Ann. And thank Rick.
Fire warden appointment form, Brad Keith is going to, wants to continue on, yes?
Yep, yep, he's actually signed it, and, um, do we have another form for this too, or is this one?
I included it in.
Okay, it's in this one?
I have the updated form. What happened was, I was going through old select board packets, and I found the one from, I think it was twenty eighteen, that expired in June of this year. I realized we'd never received notice that we needed a reappointment. I reached out to Lars Lund and said, hey, are we supposed to have done this? He goes, well, I tried reaching out, but I don't know who I'm supposed to be reaching out to, and I never got a reply email, so I don't know where it went. So I said, well, can you send the form to me? We'd like to get this followed up on and get it cleaned up and on our radar that this needs to be done in five years.
Motion for Brad Keith.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. Historical society warning for property tax exemption status. Thought they were already tax exempt.
They are, but we have to approve it every five years.
Okay.
Yep, so, last one was done in twenty nineteen.
Make a motion that we approve that.
And that's for both of their properties.
Second.
Both properties, yes.
Okay. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
They kind of wanted to get rid of the ice caves section up there, it won't die.
They're going to change that.
It's never changed, though.
Abatement of well drilling loan.
So this one, I guess, has been kicked around for about ten years, um, from the research that Ann has done and what we've found. So there was a well loan that, um, was granted, and Ann can definitely back me up on this, um, or if I have the wrong informations. The property went into bankruptcy and foreclosure, it was, I think the bankruptcy went through.
They, they foreclosed on their property two and a half years later, the couple declared bankruptcy.
Okay.
So, I mean, we'll never collect this, and it was, obviously, it could have been listed in a bankruptcy, but it could have been way down at the bottom of the line that there's nothing there, and same with the foreclosure, so it's sort of just taken up space in our books, and that's why we're looking to have it abated, because it's going to be impossible to collect.
Yep.
No way that that lien against the property.
Not now. Foreclosure and the bankruptcy took care of that.
Oh boy.
Yeah.
They don't have much choice.
Not really.
Make a motion to abate the, is it six thousand?
Six thousand.
Six thousand dollars. Bad, but that's the way it is.
Second, I guess.
Well, right, and I.
I mean, I know, it stinks, I mean, there's no way to collect it.
Actually, no more loans.
There was an, there was an email from our town, town attorney in twenty sixteen that said, no, I think it's a waste of time and resources, so.
Yeah.
You know, it's just.
All right.
We had like, wasn't there a bunch of them?
Yeah, I think that's.
A lot of them were paid off.
There's a substantial, there were a substantial number.
There was.
We're down to this one, which has had no payment, one that is more than half paid, the couple's gone through a divorce, we're trying to work through getting payments still for that one, and then another one just became paid in full, so I think we're whittling it down, we've got one, maybe two left, and if we have a second one, it's probably three or four hundred dollars left.
All right, we have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Somebody wants to be paying taxes on that property, or no?
Probably now they are, but.
It was foreclosed upon and sold.
Yes.
And this wasn't disclosed properly during foreclosure proceedings.
Yep.
Gain by it.
All right, Bridge One O Eight Funding Bond Vote.
So Craig, you still with us?
I'm still here.
I know, I apologize, I probably should have bumped you up in the agenda.
Oh, no, that's, that's fine.
So I asked Craig to attend tonight because we are looking at Bridge One O Eight starting in the spring, hopefully, and the last cost estimate on the, on the water line replacement was like four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, I believe, when I brought it last time, so, um, looking at how we would like to fund that water line, and so I asked Craig to come and talk about that, and I'm sure you guys had some questions about, you know, other bond issues with other parts of Route Seven, so I figured might as well get the guru here to, to do it for us, and, um, yeah, I guess the floor's all yours, Craig.
Okay. Um, well, quick update, um, the project has moved within the fundable range for the drinking water, uh, drinking water state revolving loan, and so that's the low interest loans to pay for water and sewer infrastructure. So that has a bunch of provisions related to readiness to proceed, and one of those, um, deadlines is to have a bond vote, uh, preferably for next town meeting day, uh, in order to meet the readiness to proceed, uh, and keep your spot in the funding, uh, cycle, essentially. So the project is looking to start up, uh, this next coming year, um, but the actual water line improvements will be a little further beyond that, because they actually have to put the bridge on, you know, build the bridge first and then, uh, put the water line on, so it's going to be a delay, uh, for a year or two before that money needs to actually be outlaid, uh, but you are in the fund, this current funding cycle as eligible, so it's a question of whether, uh, the town wants to go to bond, um, related to that project, um, for, uh, the, the water main replacement, uh, and then potentially as well, um, hanging a future sewer main, uh, to connect, uh, people, uh, conceivably down on Route Three H.
So actually with the sewer main, we were fortunate enough to have V-Trans include sleeves and hangers, hangers, so, and that's not any cost to us for those, which, well, we had to, just to engineer it, but that's going in the project on their dime, so.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's a good thing.
I, I, I guess I missed that, so we're just talking about the water then?
Right, yeah, if we were doing the sewer pipe, if we're running the extension now, we'd have to be on the hook for it, but this is anticipation of, so.
So the question is whether you want to go out to bond for this now, um, there is still an option that you could wait for this upcoming fiscal cycle and do a bond vote the following year. Um, I don't think you would necessarily have any incurred cost, uh, for the waters, water main improvements by that time, but, um, you know, if you can do the bond, uh, bond vote this year and there's not a lot of additional items on there, uh, better to get it checked off and be done and waiting rather than having something outstanding, um, related to that and V-Trans's project.
What's the interest rate on that low interest? Do you know?
The interest rate, I believe, is, uh, two percent, uh, so certainly better than fair market value, uh, currently speaking, um, there's also the potential for some subsidy. Um, I don't believe there's a large amount of subsidy available, um, currently, uh, but I do anticipate that the state is going to realize that they have a bunch of money that they need to give out in the next two years and have not done so. Um, so there is a potential for that subsidy to increase down the road, um, and obviously if you lock yourself in, uh, you increase the chance of that versus waiting, uh, to a later date.
Yeah, thanks for saying that, Craig, I was just going to say, I know our odds of getting that go up significantly if we follow the steps, so.
Yep. No guarantees, but you, you can't be in position if you haven't checked all the boxes off, so that's kind of, uh, the advice is, um, you guys don't have any pressing need to do this right now, but if there isn't a lot of, uh, agenda items for town meeting day, uh, this is a relatively small bond vote, um, related to water that you're going to have to replace on that bridge, whether you do it through this funding or some other means, um, so it is something that's going to have to be done at some point in time.
Once the bridge is built, it'll have to be done, won't it?
Yep.
Yeah, it has to be done regardless, so.
Yeah.
I would think.
It's one of our big sources, or we're, we have leakage there too, that's pretty significant, so, yeah. But, so Craig, we, we still have time to be able to put this on the, on the ballot for March, or to vote for the town on March, right?
Yes, uh, I, I talked to your, uh, town attorney about the exact timing of that, but my general understanding is you're usually well into January before you start getting to that deadline of what needs to kind of be on the agenda.
Yep.
Um, and then there would also be an, probably an informational meeting that you would want to have, uh, right before town meeting day, so that anybody who's interested in the public has the opportunity to ask questions and collect information prior to the bond vote.
Any questions for Craig on that? Well, that, I think the estimate was four hundred and fifteen thousand, right Craig?
I, I believe that's the number, I don't have it in front of me, so, uh, don't quote me on that, but that's order of magnitude, that's the cost that you're looking for related to the, the bridge project specifically.
Yeah, we're hoping it's estimated a little on the high side. Historically, that kind of stuff happens, but you never know today.
Yeah, wait six months and have everything increased thirty percent, so, yeah, I know, uh, ho, hopefully that will hold, that does have some contingency in there a little bit as well, um, but it's also somewhat beholden to what is an established price in V-Trans' bid.
Right.
Um, so V-Trans may be able to refine that number for us a little bit, um, once they have a contractor secured for the project.
They have.
They do.
Beldon's doing it.
So that's, that's a conversation we can have with Fuss and O'Neil based on Beldon's bid, and we may be able to narrow down that number, refine that number, uh, hopefully in the, in the, in the correct direction, uh, but regardless, we can kind of refine that one way or another based on the pricing that Beldon established in their bid.
Yeah, I don't see, that's weird not being able to see the bids, because it was a state bid, so I don't know what their items were, I'll have to get it from Carolyn and see what they bid at that.
Yeah, and we can, and we can have a conversation with Patricia over at Fuss and O'Neil too, she can help with that as well.
Yep.
We should get a copy of that.
Yeah. Well, gotta do it, might as well do it this year, huh?
Kind of easy one, this sequence, I don't think we have a choice.
I know.
What happens if we put it on the ballot and it's turned down?
We come up with another option to.
Revisit it.
Right.
It's got to be done.
Got to be done.
Yeah.
I think we should put, I think we should go on the ballot.
Yeah.
Yeah, without a question. Okay.
So, you, do you go on, do, would you consider making a motion for us to move forward with getting bond stuff ready for March election?
Yeah.
Okay.
Anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, we move forward to get the bond set up for election, whoever.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thanks, Craig.
I know, thank you.
Yep.
Thanks, everybody, have a good night.
Thanks.
You too.
I'll give you a shout tomorrow.
Okay, that sounds good.
All right, the cops grant.
Well, we have, we have PD hiding in the corner over there, so.
Who'd like to discuss it?
I, I guess I could start the conversation since we're campaign. We received word via the Rotten Herald that we were, we were, um, given a cops grant. This cops grant would cover a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars worth of the expenses to hire another full-time police officer over the next three years. And it was, so, a hundred and twenty-five thousand is just shy of forty percent of the cost over the next three years, divided differently per year. And then the town would be on the hook for the other sixty percent.
Do you guys have anything to add over there?
Um, when, when we came to the board and asked about the cops grant, I know there was questions about what the percentage was. And like I said then, you know, until we actually get it, we didn't know how that percentage, because over the past couple of years, they started paying less and less with that grant. So, then she, when we got it and she told us what was in it, we figured we better come back and say, okay, we got it, this is what it's going to entail, do you still want to go through with it?
We kind of thought it was going to be a larger percentage.
Well, it used to be more, uh, that they paid the first three years and the town was on the whole, the fourth year.
Yes.
But now they've broken it down, so the town is involved in it for the next three years and there's not that fourth year of full payment.
Yeah, because before it used to be a four-year grant, the last year, the town had to pay for the whole thing.
I remember you.
Right.
Because that was part of how we planned on that, yeah.
Right.
And then when we had the last grant, when we were going to go with Proctor, that was similar to how it is now. So, but we wanted to come to the board before we signed any paperwork, um, about this.
Like, is this about the same thing we went through years ago or is it quite a bit different?
It's over three years instead of four.
Yeah.
And the amount that the town has to pay is a little bit more than what it was originally.
The old deal. We went through that a hundred and thirty years ago.
Right, about ten years, ten or twelve years ago. But then they paid fully for three years and the town had to pick it up to fourth.
Ah, it sounds better the way I remember.
Do you guys want to tell them what position this would be funding?
Yeah.
Well, it would be a full-time position. I don't know when or who right now it would be, I have no idea.
How would that affect the way you're operating now, or you would lose somebody?
No, we wouldn't lose anybody, we, we would gain somebody.
Gaining somebody.
So, we cover more time.
We'd be gaining a full-time.
Uh, yes.
Not necessarily a body, but we'd be gaining a full-time.
Yes.
Correct, instead of a part-time.
Yes.
Because we went through this last year during budgeting. We talked about, I mean, three years of funding for it and the fourth year, how we plan towards the future with personnel, correct?
Chief and I did talk a little bit today about, you know, and I think Bill and I have talked about it too, about, you know, why it'd be nice to have two officers on at the same time too, especially with, you know, us trying to.
Enforce speeds.
Do more speed enforcement stuff. We still have, you know, we have our two contracts right now, possibly two more if this ever happens, but I don't want to bank on that yet. But, you know, it's just like first response with fire, the calls just keep going up and, um.
We've been getting quite a few complaints lately too about speeding. And, you know, there's only one of us on, so we could do traffic to a point, but calls of service come first. So, you know, we're limited to how much we can actually sit out there and run radar, uh, and try to curb some of the speeding. Obviously, this position would help because if we had two on at once, you know, the full-timer can manage the calls and the part-timer could do speed enforcement.
Yeah, there's definitely, I just think like, you know, I was talking to like, you get a call where there's a mental health issue or something, it is very time-consuming. And then, you know, the officer's tied up for.
Could, could be hours. Could be hours.
Half a day sometimes, easily.
Yeah.
So, you know, that's, that's when we're without, you know, someone on at that point, so I, yeah.
And even a DUI, you know, if we end up with a DUI, it can take a couple hours to fully process that DUI. And then it depends on the situation, um, it can take even longer and we're off the road. So, you know, when it's just one of us on, there's nobody covering the rest of the town while that person's doing that processing of that DUI. Our call volume went up substantially, um, since COVID. We were seven, eight hundred calls a year and we were pushing twelve hundred calls, um, a year ago. Right now, we're sitting just about at seven hundred and fifty calls for the year. But I was up for a substantial period of time, we only had two people that were actually working the road and even with just those two people, we're still up to almost seven hundred and fifty calls for the year. So, if I was on and we didn't lose a person too at that point, you know, we were still at the staff we were at, we would be pushing probably still close to a thousand calls for the year.
So, it's going to change our budget, roughly sixty-four thousand increase?
It's a stepped basis, the first year, it, the first year, our budget would go up between thirty and forty thousand, then the next year.
But sixty-four, on three years, sixty-four thousand, right?
Would this increase the need for more equipment, such as another car or something?
Right now, no, it wouldn't.
We don't have money for another car.
Wouldn't, it wouldn't, not, not at this point.
When do we have to give, um, notification of acceptance for this?
I would say, Anne, it would be relatively soon, wouldn't you?
It is relatively soon, so, right now, our person that's the point of contact for this grant is none. Thoroughly checking emails and hadn't received our email saying that we were awarded the grant. We can change who the grant administrator is, um, but I believe they are looking, they gave the grant award letter on November 2nd. They backdated it saying it started October something, so I'm thinking that they're going to be looking for an answer definitely before the end of this calendar year.
I'm on September 22nd.
Right.
So.
Thank God for Rotten Herald, or we wouldn't have known about it.
That's so crazy.
Sorry, Stephen.
Well, so the numbers are different than, but we, we okayed them going ahead and looking at for the grant. We're fine with having an extra, adding.
We did, we were just, but we were just planning on a, three years covered and dealing with it after that.
But.
Well, we had a plan, you know, do that, right? So.
Just think all the ticket revenue they're going to generate if they have someone else there.
But I think some consideration.
I think we can, I think we can.
Right, so we currently still, we do sit in right now, so there, yeah, I was supposed to meet with Proctor and Westrath last week and the meeting was canceled. So, there's, you know, we will have that conversation.
That would change the picture even more.
That would change.
Joe, that's, that would be separate, that, that separate adds to what the towns' needs are.
That, that might be a whole nother person that's funded by those two towns to cover those towns that goes to our department, so, yeah.
Well, that doesn't mean we can't use that position as part of that, compensate for that.
We could.
At least part of it, yeah.
It's different though with that because I think both those towns were, I, we were talking about this, I think they're both doing twenty hours a week.
They're forty hours.
Forty, they do forty hours.
They're both doing forty, so that's, that's an eighty-hour-a-week position unless they, we split it for two towns. It's different like if it was an SRO, you know, we could use them off like when school wasn't in session, which would be nice, but.
What page is the police income on? Is it five, six, four?
Hold on a second.
Um, it's on page four.
Four?
Alex, it starts on page three, just there's one, traffic fines is at the bottom of page three.
Even if we did Proctor Westrath.
Isn't that what he asked for?
He's asking him, right?
I got expenses in front of me.
Page three, bottom, last line on page three.
And, and, and that would be like a standalone thing because they're going to have to subsidize it.
Well, yeah, there's no way you guys would.
No. That would be, if, if they wanted it, we'd have to go out and recruit some other people.
Because you're looking at eight hours a week.
Right, that's, that's at least two people.
That's two people.
And, and you'd have to give them days off and stop all the others.
We're not, we're not even close to there yet.
No, we're not, no, we're just talking about the town of Pittsburgh.
So, so we budgeted for less coming in on traffic fines?
We did because we didn't know with our part-time staff what their availability was and I was basing it on what we'd received so far this year, knowing we hadn't had the staff availability due to illness and such. So, I was trying to base it more on fact than trying to, I'd rather underestimate revenues and overestimate costs than the other way around and end up short at the end of the year and look like we've got pie on our face.
It messes with our, our bottom line on our budget if we overestimate revenues.
So, I'd rather go conservative on revenues.
Yeah, 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 no, I'm just looking at the, what the actual was and you're right on, so. So, that would be sixty-four thousand added right on to this budget then and override, correct?
Um, for next year.
Or is, you said it was stepped?
It's stepped.
So, thirty or forty is what you said?
It could be between thirty and forty thousand additional this year than.
Right, but what would we be starting an officer out at? I mean, it wouldn't be.
So, when we, when we did the.
We'd have to take thirty off that. Right, you're thinking thirty or forty thousand you'd get the first year.
It would get the first year with everything.
So, whatever the difference is is what we would, well, we'd have to budget for the whole thing, but.
No, 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 we.
No, no.
So, our portion of the first year of the grant would be thirty to forty.
But we'd still have to budget for that officer and then the grant would offset that expense.
Not if we're moving someone from part-time to full-time, we've already, they're already part of that budget.
We'd stop the budget of full-time officer, no matter how we do it.
You would, but it would only be if you stare stuff there from a part-time, it wouldn't be a full-time position.
I'm not saying I have another body.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm saying, you'd be just. Chief, how much do you, chief, what do you think kind of change would be in the, you said more traffic tickets or more people running radar?
And more, and more coverage.
And more coverage?
Mm-hmm.
So, any idea how that would look on the bottom line for income from more coverage when it comes down to whether it be an outside area or the tickets, just for us?
You mean dollar amount one?
I know it's a terrible question, but we'd have to deal with the other side of the terrible question, so.
Mark, I can't give you an honest answer because I, I don't know day-to-day or week-to-week what, what we're going to encompass. I mean.
A lot of it does come down to call volume in town. So, there's some nights where we'll get three, four calls a shift, there's other nights where we don't and that's when we're running the tickets, so it's, it's hard to say.
Yeah, I just didn't know.
I couldn't give you a number off the top of my head.
Then that's fair.
I think, I don't know, well, fortunately and unfortunately, you know, the, the purpose for traffic control is to slow people down and hopefully they get the, the point and that we're not writing tickets all along, but I mean, that's the thing.
No, but if you're, if you're running it more often, then it automatically changes that dynamic.
The goal would be public safety versus.
Right.
Well, well, it is, but we have to ask that question because if you have more hours doing it, then you have to figure what, you know, changes on that, so. Not that I want any more tickets. When do you think the drop dead date is for this and Anne, what are we looking at, do you think, or yesterday?
Yeah, like tonight.
If you can't fill a position, I guess it just, it's going to go away, is that right?
What was that?
If you can't fill a position.
Oh, yeah.
It just goes away.
Yeah. Well, I think we could, I really truly think we could fill this.
I don't know, they're having trouble finding cops.
Well, if we move someone from part-time to full-time, you know, it's not really, you just.
Well, yeah.
I think it's worth committing to for three years.
Yeah, I do too, I do too.
And then it's revisited then, like, I'm sure that that's what you folks did in the last cops grant.
Give a motion.
I made the motion to the board and accept the cops grant.
Oh, second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
But did that mean yes or no?
Yes, that was a yes.
Joe, Joe, yes?
I didn't, I, it's out of here.
You abstained.
I question, in my mind, I question whether our, whether we're more interested in creating a new position and a new officer, which is not all bad, but is our bad things that are happening in town, that, that bad that we need to expand that much? That, and maybe there's no way of answering that, but that does go through my mind.
Society isn't getting any better, Joe, watch the news.
I know, all kinds of shootings and everything everywhere.
Just, just information that I got tonight, it could be tragic, um, but that, that, I understand that.
This isn't necessarily going to have us bring in a new person, it's going to allow us to take a part-time.
Right, just more hours.
So.
More coverage.
We're going, we're going to be adding a, a full-time position and let that come.
More hours, more hours.
A certain amount of cost and, and is our, have we got that many bad people here in town that we need to do that? That's.
Hopefully, we have a lot coming in from out of town.
I'm not in a position where I can tell you.
Joe, let me just throw this at you, okay? We had a gentleman in town that, that came in, was last October, okay? And as I go through this, everybody's going to know who I'm talking about.
Yep.
But from October until December, at that point, we had over twenty calls of service because of this individual. As of March, between VSP and this department, we had over fifty-one calls of service for this individual. We were going there two to three times a day sometimes because of it. That is a humongous drain on the department. And it also, when there's only one of us on and we have to deal with that for hours on end, there's nobody in town to cover anything else that's going on. So, just, you know, keep in mind that there is things that go on here that you may not necessarily hear about.
True.
Um, but we have to deal with it and lately, it's, it's getting to the point where, you know, we definitely do need a second officer to, to help with some of these calls.
Chief, what's our percentage of Route 7 when you're right? What percent goes to the town, what goes to the state?
It depends on where on Route 7.
If it's in the fifty, the state gets a larger percentage of it. And then if it's in the thirty-five or the twenty-five, then we get it.
We get what, a large percentage?
Yeah, it's like, it's like sixty, sixty, forty?
I think we should also consider writing, writing a letter to the state saying that needs to be adjusted because of lack of state police coverage. And now that we're having to fund our own officers to do this, I think they should adjust that percentage because.
All I'm going to say there, Mark, is good luck.
If you don't do it, you never know.
Right, but every, every, it seems like every year, the percentage of the paperwork and stuff, they take more and more from us.
How many have you sent?
Oh, we've sent several over the years, we've sent several.
When was the last time we sent one? When was the last time we sent one?
About a couple of years ago?
I'd say, let's do it again.
I think it was right when I started, actually.
Don't get if you don't ask.
How did you want to have your vote recorded?
Was abstaining, that's where it was.
Okay, all right.
So it's still passed.
2-1-1. 2-1-1.
I voted aye. I don't know what you're against.
Yeah.
Absolutely, I did. Took me a minute, it was a bit...
I know. Good thing we're just, we're fleshing this out now.
Expenses always make me delay that. And I do think we should consider rewriting that letter if we have to because...
Sure. Absolutely, fine with me. You're right, you're right. You got a, you got a list of letters that you're going to have to...
Change the date on the other one, right?
Yeah, that's fine. Point out the fact we've had to add another full-time officer.
We'll be bringing that to the board.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. Have a good night.
You guys.
Um, all right, any questions on the orders? Did everyone see the added, the added extra one there?
So I asked if we could add that because we have three weeks between the meeting, so...
I had a question here. Roof field service, that's on them generators that...
Yep.
They're roughly about 5,000 or a little better in, in expenses.
That's the...
Those generators that we own them, don't we?
Yep, but we have to do annual maintenance on them and they have to be certified. So that's the contracts. I think we have four of them we have to do every year.
Dave, that's the one for sewer, water, when we had the issue with the generator.
These two are? I think, I think these are maintenance ones. Because they're only, they're 2,600 and 2,900. I think those are the, well, actually, I can just look.
So if those are the annual maintenance, I think we need to look for someone else.
Yeah, that's the problem. We, there, there aren't any.
Yeah, there's other companies.
They do municipal generator stuff?
I think you might want to, I think we should look into it.
Hold on, hold on a minute. I, I can look into it, but I mean, we've had, I don't know, I went through this in the other town too.
5,500.
I think Anna's right on this. So this was, I'm, I'm going to, Anna's right on this one. So this was one where we had that big generator down at Wastewater, the, I don't know, it's huge, it's massive. And it was brand new. They went to use it. When we had all the flooding and stuff, it didn't start. So they had a service call and then they actually let us borrow one of theirs and they had an astronomical amount that they want us to pay for and we challenged it. So, so this is for the, yeah, it's the 100-kilowatt cat. So this was for, um, so we paid $2,900 for rental for the one that they brought to us and then $2,500 for the repair.
How long do we use that for?
Well, two weeks, I think we've ended up getting it for...
We got billed for two weeks. We actually used it for one.
Yeah, we used it for one, so...
Used for one. I'd say that's pretty much...
This is, this is a rather large generator, like...
Oh, that's a big generator.
Yeah. So we can put an RFL for, for generator maintenance if you want.
It'd be August of next year to put it out because we just signed the contracts.
Okay.
Yeah, I know, I looked at this contract for mine, I was seeing, so I didn't do it.
Yeah.
Same place.
Joe, you had something?
Well, I had another question here. We rented an excavator apparently for $6,740. Was that for, what length of time was that for?
Um, that's the one we've been using up on Oxbow, so I'd have to look on the, it was, it's been in use for quite a while.
Joe, that was my question too. They both those same circle. You're a winner. So, yeah.
Quite a, quite a number of hours.
It was a pretty large excavator too. Which contractor was that?
I'm all for renting, something like that. We, we do it in our business on occasion. But, uh, if we're going to rent a machine, we can write after it and make it work and not just have it sitting around.
So this, this wasn't sitting. We, I mean, if you go look at the section of road that the guys rebuilt, it was...
I mean, you know, I'm not saying it's a bad deal or anything, but I was just curious. It must have had it quite a little while to be, to be that kind of a speed.
I don't have a date on this one on how long we rented it for, but usually they do them for a month, so... I can ask Jamie.
You do by the week or you can do it by the month?
Yeah. I know the last time I rented one was by the month, so...
It's a huge, it's even a huge month.
We've rented up the biggest, ain't funny.
What size excavator was it?
DX-140.
Next thing, we've got to put an operator for it.
For us.
Not a plan.
Do something.
Do something.
Or Kavalon or whatever you want to call it now.
Anything else on the orders?
None of that.
That's all I had, sir.
All right.
Yes.
Okay, we'll start signing then.
Did you do that order? The little one?
Yeah.
Okay.
There we go.
Here, Joe, I'll just stand them to you one at a time here. Uh, let's see, I've got some orders.
That's a mini excavator.
The one they used up on, the one they used up on Oxbow was not...
Is that what you said, 140?
I think I said DX-140. The one that we had up on Oxbow was not a mini.
It's a mini, according to this, so...
You have a John Deere 140?
Buy one, then we don't have to rent one. We'll dig up what happened.
This one looks a little bigger.
Well, it's got one sitting in the yard and it bothers me sometimes.
DX, not X.
So you said X.
Yeah, DX-140 would make sense.
It's got a bunch of other numbers after it, Joe.
Well, that's like, I have, I just have to look.
Is Kelly? I need Kelly so much here, don't I?
This little size, like, Joe?
You go.
She's for a month. I took my bottom line, Joe.
We got you all messed up tonight, don't we, man?
You all signed the wrong lines. It's a mini excavator.
I just looked at that. There's some online, used like 2016 for $91,000.
DX versus an X. We were told an X. DX is bigger.
I heard DX.
Yeah, they're bigger. They're a lot bigger than that X. X are just a little...
All right, well, there's nothing else. That'll end our open part of our meeting. We're going to executive.